Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ed Flynn. I am the City Council President. Viewers can watch this City Council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/citycouncil-tv. I would like to ask my colleagues and those in attendance to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices at this time. Thank you. Please also be respectful and do not disrupt the meeting while you are here. If you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave. If you fail to comply, you will be escorted out. Please also note, according to the City Council rules, there are no signs allowed in the chamber. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum? Counselor Bark. Counselor Braden. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Lara. Counselor Louie Jean. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy. And Counselor Worrell. Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Introduction of the clergy. This week's clergy is Muhammad, who was invited by Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, if you would like to come up to the podium with Muhammad. He's with Iqna Relief, and I'm honored to have Muhammad join us.
Salaam alaikum. I wanted to introduce Muhammad Abdurrahim today. He is a Muslim that grew up in the city of Boston and became engaged in informing people about the wonders and beauty of Islam and Islamic way of life. He currently teaches Islamic Studies at the ISBBCC. And he also works at the National Muslim Service Organization named Iqna Relief. In short, he is a powerful and passionate advocate, a religious leader, and a scholar of the highest order. And I am proud and humbled that he has seen fit to grace us with his presence today in the spirit of Ramadan. Ramadan Mubarak, and welcome, brother Muhammad.
Jazakallah khair. Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Inna alhamdulillah, na hamiduhu wa nastahinuhu wa nastaghfiruhu. Wa na'udzubillahi min shuroori anfusina wa min seyyaati a'malina. Men yahdihiilahu fa laa muzilla lah, omen yudlil fala ahaadiya lah. Wa ashadu an laa ilaha illa Allah, wahdahu laa shariqalah. Wa ashadu an Muhammadin abduhu wa rasuluh. And I will translate that. Don't worry. So just quickly, Tanya Fernandez, thank you for the warm welcome. But just one correction. I am not a scholar of highest eminence. I hope to be one day, insha'Allah, if God willing. So Tanya, as she was getting off the stage, she said a very special term. She said Ramadan Mubarak. We are in the month, the blessed month of Ramadan, which is a very holy month for us as Muslims. And this month, Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, tells us in the Quran, the holy scripture, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Shahr Ramadan aladi undila fihin Quran, hudani ninas wabeyinatin minan hudawwal furqan. Fal... Sorry. So Shahr Ramadan is a blessed month that the Quran was revealed to us in that month. Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, chose the Quran to be revealed in this month of all of the months. So it is a very special time for us as Muslims, and we welcome it with open hands. We actually have, from the tradition of our prophet, peace be upon him, for the six months after Ramadan and the six months preceding Ramadan, he is in prayer asking Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, that we reach the month of Ramadan just to reach the blessings of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So that's just the introduction to the month that we are currently in. And also, I wanted to say, may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, and when we say Allah, it's just the creator of the universe for all of us that are non-Muslim. It's the same thing as saying creator of the universe. So we would like Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, to purify our intentions because that is one thing that we all know that gets out of hand a lot of times, and we have to keep that in check. And it's actually from the tradition of the Muslim to continuously purify their intentions. So may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, purify our intentions. I ask all of you today to keep in mind that we are here in unison. We are here to see how we can better this world together. Muslim and non-Muslim, just mankind in general. We are here to better our society, and especially here, the city of Boston, because that's where we all reside in. So may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, make this a fruitful discussion today, a fruitful meeting. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and speak and introduce myself and introduce this month of Ramadan. Jazakumullah khair. Wassalamualaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Tanya is pointing at me. Did I forget something? Yes, of course. Okay, great. So if you guys don't mind standing and joining us in this prayer. So we ask Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, the creator of the universe, to allow this to be a great discussion where we discuss the things that we all need and that the city of Boston needs. And may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, grant us the ability to see the right from the wrong. Just like in the ayah in the Quran, it says, it is a clear distinction between right and wrong. May Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, grant us that vision to tell which is right and which is wrong. Thank you so much again, and I will leave it off to whoever is going to come up. Thank you. Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Thank you, Muhammad, for those inspiring words. And please know the Boston City Council is with the Muslim community during this Ramadan period. If you're able to, will you please stand and join us? Join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Muhammad, and thank you, Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, for inviting Muhammad here. Now on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. The meeting of the last minute stand as approved. Communication from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0463.
Docket number 0463, message in order for your approval. An order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, two statements of interest. The statement of interest describes and explains the deficiencies and the priority categories for which the city of Boston may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Docket 0463 will be referred to the committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0464.
Docket number 0464, message in order for your approval, a revised order authorizing the city of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, statement of interest for its accelerated repair program for the following schools: Haley Pilot School, Curly K through 8 School Lower Building, Burke High School, Henderson K through 12 Inclusion School Upper Campus, Orenberger School, and English High School.
Thank you. Docket 0464 will be referred to the committee on Ways and Means. Matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0321.
Docket number 0321, petition for a special law regarding securing environmental justice in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Royal, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Counsel Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Government Operations held a working session on Monday, April 4th, on docket 0321, petition for a special law regarding securing environmental justice in the city of Boston, which was sponsored by Counselor Lydia Edwards. I'd like to thank my council colleagues for attending: Counselor Flynn, Counselor Lara, Counselor Mejia, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Flaherty, Counselor Bark, and Counselor Worrell. This home rule petition would declare that a state of emergency exists in the city of Boston with regards to environmental injustice and climate change. If passed, this legislation would amend the BPDA's Enabling Acts and remove public services corporation's ability to seek an exemption to all Boston zoning laws by petitioning the State Department of Public Utilities. Instead, this legislation will give the building commissioner the authority to enforce environmental justice standards if the commissioner determines that a use or proposed use of a building, structure, or land in the city would negatively impact environmental rights afforded to residents by state law. The building commissioner would have the authority to issue a stop work order or suspend any issued permits, licenses, or authorizations associated with the use or proposed use. At the working session, the committee heard from several environmental justice advocates about the urgency of securing environmental justice in Boston and protecting local communities. The utility company representatives stated that they believe that existing state regulations provided sufficient environmental justice protections. The sponsor clarified that the legislation would grant extra authority to the building commissioner and that more specific building standards can be crafted by the zoning commission and the building commissioner if the state passes this. There was a suggestion that language be added specifying that the process of deciding those building standards shall be guided by the needs of community through a civic engagement process. So while we wait to receive specific language amendments that were discussed at the working session, we're recommending that this remains in committee.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. Would any of our colleagues like to speak on this matter? Docket 0321 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0295.
Docket number 0295, order for a hearing to explore municipal bonds and other fiscal options to increase affordable housing and community investments.
The chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counselor Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Can we refer back? Because I left my report.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, can we go on to docket 0313, and we'll return to docket 0295?
Docket number 0313, message in order for an appropriation order in the amount of $27,205,854 from fiscal year 2022 Community Preservation Fund revenues for community preservation projects at the recommendation of the city of Boston Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty, Chair of the Committee on Community Preservation Act. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last night, we held a great hearing on docket 0313, the appropriation for the $27-plus million for the CPC. I want to thank my colleagues who joined me, and obviously, a special thank you to the vice chair, Counsel Kenzie Bark, who helped finish out the hearing with the Zoom testimony, as well as central staff who worked late to accommodate the evening hearing. As someone who led the efforts on this body to help get CPA passed, along with some of my colleagues and many, many constituents and advocates and voters across the city, this hearing is my favorite hearing each year. It's the opportunity for us to see a great program evolve and continue to grow, and you see more folks get excited about it. I think you referenced it last night, and after you had left, other folks that spoke, I referenced your comments about talking about something that just brings people and brings communities together. It's the CPA, as I believe, envisioned. With that said, we heard following testimony from Maureen Garso. We heard from Chief Dillon, Deputy Director Jessica Boatright, Chief Marianna Hammond, Ryan Woods, the Commissioner of Parks, Courtney Whalen, and Gillian Lang from Historic Preservation, and last but not least is Thaddeus Brown, Deputy Director of the Community Preservation. And she does a phenomenal job, as referenced, and also folks that testified talked about how Thaddeus makes them feel like they're the only applicant. And she goes to Great Lakes to make sure that they have all their information and ducks in line, and that whatever's missing, or her outreach as well. Can we do better? Always, we can always do better. But if any program in the city is working and is reaching out as best they can, it's this group, and they'll continue to do so, as referenced by our colleagues' questions last night. The breakdown is as follows: $27 million and change will go $14,660,159 will go to affordable housing projects, $6,141,357 will go to historic preservation projects, and $6,404,338 in recreational use and open space projects. So that, to date, over $92 million has been awarded to 198 projects spanning across the city. And with the approval of this appropriation, we'll be awarding $119 million to 250 projects since the funding began in 2018. So during the course of the hearing, we had robust public testimony in favor of the proposed projects, all of the very deserving, including testimony from some of our youngest residents in the city advocating for projects that impacted their school, their community, and others. As Chair of the Committee, I'd like this matter to remain in committee just to allow for some further public comments, given that the hearing went late, and we want to make sure that folks that wanted the opportunity to advocate on behalf of these three buckets of affordable housing, historic preservation, and open space have the opportunity to do so, in which case I look forward to putting a committee report together for this body to consider to vote on next Wednesday. If any of my other colleagues who the chair would like to speak, happy to accommodate that, and we'll have this thing turned around by next Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Any of our colleagues like to speak on this matter? Just want to say thank you to Counsel Flaherty and Counsel Bark and central staff, the mayor's office that was here last night, working late. We appreciate everything in your leadership on this important issue. As Counsel Flaherty highlighted, the Community Preservation Act is an opportunity for neighbors to come together, work with city officials, learn about city government, and also improve the quality of life of their neighborhood. So it's a tremendous program. Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Docket 0313 will remain in committee. We're moving on to... Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket 0295, please?
Docket number 0295, order for a hearing to explore municipal bonds and other fiscal options to increase affordable housing and community investments.
The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing to explore prospect of opportunities for more housing or creating more affordable housing by way of bonds. And we... I'd like to thank the administration. I'd like to thank my lead, the lead co-sponsor, or the lead sponsor and my co-sponsor on this hearing. And it will remain in, basically, it will remain in committee. And we just basically had a robust conversation about the possibilities. Administration broke down what bonds was. They gave us a lot of back and forth, not back and forth, but explanations as to what the risks are and in terms of what the possibilities are. They said they would go back to us with projections of what those numbers actually look like. I don't know if my co-sponsors like to say anything else about it, but I think that we definitely saw a possibility of exploring bonds, and we'll be happy to report more as we go.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson. Would any of our colleagues like to speak on this matter? The chair recognizes Counsel Louie Jean. Counsel Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to say thank you to the chair for the great conversation yesterday around bonds. I want to thank the administration, just to stare at Maureen Garso and Jim Williamson. We came and we talked about bonds. We talked about our general debt policy, but also about, you know, what would it look like to increase our debt service or to actually change our repayment schedule so that our bond repayments are a smaller fraction of our overall budget, which would give us flexibility to do a lot more. We obviously have been, as a city, always touting this AAA bond raising, which a lot of us are very proud of as a city. But a lot of that is built on a strong economy that is often entrenched in inequities in our city. And so exploring ways in which we can actually attack these issues, like affordable housing, like community investments, like more infrastructure in neighborhoods that have been forgotten and excluded, and leaning into our fiscal strength through our bond policy is one way to do that. So I want to thank everyone who participated in that conversation, you, President Flynn, Counselors Mejia, and Worrell, obviously, my co-sponsors, Counsel Bark and Counsel Fernandez-Anderson, both of whom have presented really great ideas around housing and how we can use, combine our city's fiscal strength with whether it's what we need to do under the Faircloth Amendment to get more social housing built or rental home options. I think this really does present us with a really great opportunity to pay for and do the things that we need to do in community to address the urgency of the crises that we're facing here as a city. So it's just the beginning of a conversation, and I thank the chair for holding it and everyone who leaned into it, because I know it can seem pretty dry, like bond policy, but it is really important. It's how we pay for a lot of things that we need to get done. So I appreciate this hearing and look forward to further conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean.
Oh, and also just want to thank Counselor, former City Counselor Josh Saikum and Professor Ben Bradlow, who came and provided really great testimony and really, I think, did a great job of centering the urgency of the issues we face and how our bond policy can be a tool here.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean. The chair recognizes Counsel Bark. Counsel Bark, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, and thank you also to my co-sponsors, Counsel Fernandez-Anderson and Counsel Louie Jean, the lead sponsor. This was a great hearing to have. I won't summarize it because they've both done so well. But it's just exciting to me. You know, the last time we were having a version of this conversation, it was last term, and the mayor was a co-sponsor on that. And so I think that, you know, talking to our ANF team and seeing the kind of desire and willingness in the council to really bond for housing in a new and robust way, I think like the stars are aligning, I hope, for us to really talk about that at scale in Boston. And I just want to stress in this forum that, you know, when you look at the West Coast cities, LA, San Francisco, Portland, many of which are in very similar acute housing situations as us, each of them in the last five years have put out bonds for $1 billion on housing. And I just think that, you know, in the same way that we talked about bonding for, you know, $1 billion over 10 years for BPS with the Build BPS strategy, I think the time has come to talk about that here. And I think that the reality is that there are ways to adjust our policy, and even within our policy, some of our efficiencies in getting capital spending to actually happen in ways to kind of make room for that type of serious investment. And so, yeah, just really grateful to the colleagues for relaunching this conversation. And as everyone knows, I think we should be in the business of building more public housing in the city and that we can. We're authorized by the feds to build another 2,500 units. So I hope this is a conversation that we can have aggressively and move forward in the coming months. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bark. Anyone else like to speak on this matter? At this time, docket 0295 will remain in committee. We're going on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0465.
Docket number 0465, Counselors Worrell and Louie Jean offer the following: Petition for a special law relative to enact authorizing additional licenses for the sale of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises in Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
I'd like to suspend and add Counsel Royal to the docket.
Seeing and hearing, no objections. Counsel Royal was added as the original third co-sponsor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and thank you to my co-sponsors, Counsel Louie Jean and Counsel Royal. I also want to acknowledge the work that Congresswoman Presley has done on liquor licenses here in the city of Boston. Out of the 1,448 liquor licenses in the city, only two restaurants have liquor licenses in Mattapan and only six on Blue Hill Live. In this home rule petition, we are being intentional by creating liquor licenses for those established restaurants in neighborhoods of Dorchester, Hyde Park, and Mattapan, because we must do more and create equity in liquor licensing. I must admit, this home rule petition is a little selfish of me because like many of our other residents, I too want to be able to eat, watch the game, enjoy Don Julio Resposado neat in my own neighborhood. Liquor license in these areas will help our small, locally-owned restaurants reestablish themselves after coming through a negative impact of COVID-19. This is an opportunity for us to use our powers to help create local revenue and local jobs and create a clear pathway to small business owners to recover. Through the creation of capacity-sized liquor licenses, we will help the small restaurants establish financial sufficiency, generating the revenue to expand and the ability to create more jobs in our neighborhoods. This is why we must make sure we increase all liquor licenses each year. It's about the economic health of all of our neighborhoods. I'm looking forward to the discussion and on the discussion around what is the correct amount of liquor license needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. The chair recognizes Counsel Louie Jean. Counsel Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Counsel Worrell for introducing this home rule petition. It's really important that we do everything we can. Like Counsel Worrell, I would also like to have more restaurants in my neighborhood where I can just hang out, have a good time with my friends. And obviously, in our neighborhoods like Mattapan, like Hyde Park, certain parts of Dorchester, those are hard to come by. And we know that it's been really difficult. And as Counsel Worrell stated, now Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley really led the charge here, and there's still a lot more work to do to get liquor licenses into our neighborhoods. Obviously, that's hard when we have to go to the state each time. And following on the work that we did last week trying to get restricted liquor licenses, along with my co-sponsor, Counsel Mejia, in Roxbury, this is continuing part of that same dialogue. And I think Counsel Worrell offers creativity on ways that we can address that for our entrepreneurs and our startup restaurants and businesses and to think creatively about how we can automate having an increase in these licenses in the future. So thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you, Counsel Louie Jean. The chair recognizes Counsel Royal. Counsel Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Counsel Worrell and Counsel Louie Jean, for moving this forward. As many counselors know, I don't actually drink, but I recognize the competitive disadvantage that restaurants without liquor licenses find themselves at in the city when it comes to surviving as a business in the city. We know that there's also a difference in the quality of food at restaurants that have liquor licenses in terms of the ability to offer sit-down services as opposed to take-out services. And when they did a study at the Boston Public Health Commission on sort of the butterfly effect of things like this, what ended up being found was due to the lack of liquor licenses in some place like Mattapan, what actually that cascaded towards was a lack of sit-down restaurants, and that led to a lack of food options and healthy food options for residents, which then led to health impacts on our communities. And so many of these things that may not seem to have any sort of intersectionality with other really important aspects of quality of life in our neighborhoods do. And so there's a competitive reason to do this. There's a smart, small-business-keeping-dollars-local reason to do this. And there's also distinct health impacts and benefits of doing something like this in neighborhoods that have not seen the kind of liquor license access like Hyde Park, like Mattapan, like Dorchester, that other places, specifically downtown and other places, have seen. And, you know, this is something that I hope we continue to do. I hope that there's an automated way to continue to increase those numbers because frankly, the liquor license process is a little arcane, and I don't really believe beneficial to business in the city, period. Other cities that have different liquor license processes have healthier restaurant industries, have healthier bar industries, have healthier sort of hospitality industries. And I think, you know, ultimately, this is something that has been a fight for the council for a very, 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 very long time when it comes to liquor licenses and preserving the value of people who have liquor licenses. And I do wonder in the future whether or not there's space to look at whether or not we have the ability to sort of purchase out as a city some of these liquor licenses and really move towards creating a brand-new process at some point in time. But in the guidelines and in the rubrics and the ways in which we're supposed to do this now, I think this is a good start. So thank you to the counselors. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Royal. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Counsel Bark, Counsel Braden, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Lara, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy. Please add the chair. Government, docket 0465 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0466.
Docket number 0466, Counsel Royal offer the following: In ordinance, creating a municipal identification card in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Royal. Counsel Royal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm very excited to introduce municipal... I'm very excited to introduce municipal identification or an ordinance to create municipal identification for the city of Boston. This has been a long time coming. There was a study done in 2018 exploring the feasibility of this and what services residents would want, but other major cities like New York, like Los Angeles, Chicago have already successfully done municipal identification programs. And the great part about a municipal identification program is it gives Boston residents sort of a one-card-fits-all situation. So in Chicago, for instance, their municipal residence ID cards allow them to access the MBTA. It serves as what our Charlie cards would serve as, their Venture Card, so their identification actually works as their T card. It also works as their Boston, their Chicago Public Library card. So the goal here is to create a municipal ID that sort of centers city services on one card, but also does things like New York's card, which New York's card gives you benefits to cultural institutions. It gives you sales and discounts to tickets to the museums and to the, to their zoos and to their different city institutions. And so it gives this one sort of resource-rich card access. The wonderful part about municipal identification is that it allows us to be more inclusive in the city in who has IDs. We need IDs for many different things, and some standards for IDs are very difficult for folks who are here with proper documentation or without proper documentation to attain. This would allow folks, under a very strenuous list of requirements, to preserve identification of who they are to the agency that will issue these, but also that they live here. This gives the opportunity to create a very inclusive city and to send a message that Boston is a gateway city, is a city that is looking to be as inclusive and welcoming to all who call Boston home. And so I am excited to move forward with this. We have very workable examples that now exist in other cities. This is no longer a new idea. This has already sort of started to take root and has been in place for several years in other municipalities, so we're, we're sort of following up on that. But this is something that really should exist and really will go a long way to improving the lives and residents in the city of Boston. And so I look forward to introducing this and to moving this through. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Royal. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to, would anyone else like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Councilor Bach, Councilor Braden, Councilor Edwards, Councilor Fernandez Anderson, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor Lara, Council Lou Jean, Councilor Mejia, Council Murphy, Councilor Worrell. Please add the Chair. Docket 0466 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, please amend the attendance report to include Councilor Edwards as President. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0467.
Docket number 0467, Councilors Flynn and Braden offer the following: in order for a hearing to discuss pest control in the city of Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council Royal. May I suspend Rule 12 and add Councilor Murphy as an original sponsor?
Seeing and hearing, no objection. Council Murphy is so added. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues, Council Braden and Council Murphy, but also all of my colleagues that have been working diligently on pest control-related issues, whether it's over the last couple of months or over the last several years. This is, this is an issue that I receive, I receive many calls on each day throughout, throughout my district, South Boston, the South End, Chinatown, Bay Village, and other areas. It's a public health situation, it's a public safety situation, and it's a quality-of-life concern for me and for residents of the city. When discussing rodent control, we also need to talk about illegal dumping that's happening across our city, but also talking about the proper way to take out a trash barrel. And part of that has to be an educational component to residents on the effective and proper way of taking out a barrel and how to store it and how to clean it. It seems simple, but these quality-of-life issues are critical. It's important that we discuss pest control because it's literally impacting every neighborhood across the city, and I'm going to hopefully work with my colleagues in advocating for more funding during, during the budget process to address this critical issue. So again, want to say thank you to all of my colleagues, to Mayor Wu and her team, have been on several walk, walkarounds on various neighborhoods with, with Public Works, with code enforcement, with inspectional services, especially in the South End, about this issue. So again, want to say thank you to the dedicated city employees that work on this, on this issue, but they need more support from, from us as well. Thank you, Council Royal.
Thank you, Council Flynn. The Chair now recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to President Flynn for continuing to include me as a co-sponsor in this important topic. Pest control and pest and rodent infestations are certainly a big issue all across our city and in neighboring municipalities, as we hear in the news about other, Newton and Somerville and Cambridge all have the same, similar problems. But Alston Brighton has, Alston has achieved the dubious honor of being named Rat City for a reason, and with the vast influx of development occurring in, in the neighborhood, we are seeing many, many more complaints from, from residents about increased presence of rodents in our, in our, in our yards and in our, in our streets and in our restaurants, not in our restaurants, but around our outdoor dining facilities and in our restaurants. We also have a huge number of absentee landlords, many of whom are not, are not, do not provide adequate trash receptacles and do not keep their premises clean and tidy to prevent rat infestation. The other concern we have is, we just heard in a recent hearing that we're no longer going to be able to put mattresses into, into, on Trash Day, put them out on Trash Day. It's a big concern that as we change these rules about mattress disposal beginning in November, that we will, we can anticipate an increase instance of illegal dumping and inappropriate disposal that would further increase rat infestations across our, our city. So I look forward to the conversation. I hope that, this is a perennial conversation, I think we've been talking about this for years, but I hope that we can continue to push for more adequate funding to help address these issues and also to see if we can innovate and come up with good solutions. This is not just a problem with the rodents themselves, but also with human behaviors and how we dispose, how we live in an urban setting and try and, try and limit the opportunities for rodent infestations. It's not rocket science. Rodents have a hierarchy of needs: water, food, and shelter. And if we can educate our residents about appropriate trash disposal, et cetera, hopefully we can move, move the dial on, on some of these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Chair now recognizes Council Murphy.
Thank you. So many neighborhoods across the city we know has, have a rodent problem. I've had one for years on my street, so I'm happy to join President Flynn and Councilor Braden to tackle this issue. Like Councilor Flynn said, this is a quality-of-life and a public health issue, and my office gets calls and emails all the time, not just from Alston Brighton, which I know most of the calls do come from, but from neighborhoods across, you know, every neighborhood in the city. So I look forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? See, Council Mejia. Council Mejia, the floor is yours.
Yep. Thank you to the makers. Really excited to have this conversation. Just want to point out a few things. One, in terms of accountability, we also need to lean into developers, right, in terms of how they do business here in the city of Boston, because when development happens in our city, we see a high influx of rodents. And I think that that's something that we need to lean into in terms of who needs to be on that target list. And then I also want to uplift landlords, right? Landlords also have a role to play in this, so I think that it's great that we are including them. And then it's also important for us as a city to look at BHA and management companies. There are a lot of folks, the CDCs, that get money to support and be property managers, but I get calls all the time from parents and families who are dodging literally rats every single day and, and, you know, don't see themselves really being heard. So I think that in terms of accountability, we need to ensure that we're bringing the management companies into these conversations because they also have a role to play in how we deal with this situation. And I think, you know, I always think back about during remote learning, there were a lot of young people who were afraid to turn on their cameras because they were afraid that their, their classmates would see rodents, cockroaches, and mice pass across the screen. And I think that that speaks volumes to the, the social and emotional impact that this is also making on our students. So I just wanted to let that up.
Thank you, Council Mejia. Councilor Lara, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to thank President Flynn and the other co-sponsors. I think that this is a unique opportunity for us to collaborate with other neighboring cities. I think, as Councilor Braden mentioned, this is an issue that is a regional issue. City Councilor at large from Somerville, Charlotte Kelly, famously ran her campaign with a rat plan for Somerville, and Somerville has a free pest control assistance program that they run and that they offer to homeowners. And so there's a lot of, there's opportunity for us to innovate, and there's also a lot of best practices that are already put in place by our counterparts in surrounding cities. And so my hope is that we can invite them to talk about what they've implemented and how we can recreate some of that here in the city of Boston as well.
Thank you, Council Lara. Chair now recognizes Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please add my name and just through the maker, just suggesting that we bring, obviously, ISD and maybe the Fire Department. The solution to this issue is dry ice. The problem is apparently someone has patented it and it's called Rat Ice. So it now requires our Road and Control Division, when they want to administer this, which is the safest and most humane way to address the issue. They have to get in a vehicle, drive up to Woburn, and get what's called a label, which is basically a permit. They then have to turn around and then go down to Rockland and pick up the dry ice and then come back to the city of Boston. Colossal waste of time. So we need to figure out a way through ISD, maybe our Fire Department, maybe the council through ordinance, to allow the Inspection Service Department to get dry ice right over at the New Market area, which is where they used to get it before someone got cute or smart, or whatever term you want to put on it, and they've now patented it, which now prevents municipalities like Boston to be able to utilize a very useful tool to combat rodent infestation. And for those that know anything about the Norwegian rat and how they migrate and how they repopulate, all of that stuff, reproduce, you know that the baiting and the traps only go so far. But also, when you have experts in here, which we've had experts in this chamber, they talk about, they've almost become immune to some of the pesticides, the bait that we're using. In fact, they've built up such a tolerance that, you know, in the old days, you would only take a little bait would work. Now, you literally have to put basically a pound of bait to be able to sort of, just to be able to maintain some sense of catching up. Dry ice eliminates all that. And so you think about the rats that have burrowed in the common and/or all of our parks or around our BHA developments. Walk along the BHA developments when you take tours in your district and see all the rat holes along sides of the building. Dry ice will solve that problem almost instantaneously. So again, through the maker, if you could make sure that we get ISD, maybe the Fire Department, maybe even state regulators, because this is, there's a solution to this problem. It's very simple. It's dry ice. However, our hands are tied because someone has patented it and its regulations that oversee it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Council Royal, and I, I certainly agree with my colleague, Council Flaherty. We will have that discussion here about dry ice. We will have the appropriate city agencies, and that is our plan, is to try to come up with a solution where we have easy access, city, city officials have easy access to dry ice, because that's a huge, that's a huge asset for us in dealing with, dealing with this issue. I was in the South End in one of the public alleys two weeks ago, and the amount of rodents and rats in that area, the only way they could kill them is through, through dry ice. But the, the other aspect I feel to mention that I want to mention now since I have the opportunity, the city is coming out with the composting citywide. So we also want to make sure that when the city of Boston comes out with the composting plan, that there's a huge educational aspect to it. It's not as simple as just disposing of the, of the food waste. There's a, there's a process to it that residents need to be educated. The, the other aspect is we also need to educate our residents that don't speak English, and we have to have a, a campaign around, around the city in various languages so that we can educate people in different languages about this quality of life, this public health. I call it an emergency, really. So thank you. Thank you to Council Flaherty. And when I do, when we do have this committee hearing, my goal is to keep it in, keep it open so that we can meet on it every, every month or so with various experts, continue to learn about it, and continue to make progress on it. I had the opportunity to talk to the city of Newton last month. The city of New York has an excellent rodent pest control program, but a lot of good cities are doing great work on this, on this issue. It's about, also about working together. So again, want to say thank you to my colleagues for their interest and their work on this issue for, for a long period of time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Chair recognizes Council Bach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to dovetail on that to say that as the Chair of City Services, I, I very much think this is like the, it is like the ultimate in like basic city services and like what does it mean to have a clean and sanitary city. And so definitely look forward to working with the President and the co-sponsors around both holding that hearing and, as he suggested, keeping it open, making sure that that's an ongoing conversation throughout the term. So looking forward to it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Council Bach. Would anyone else like to add their name? Please add, Mr. Clerk, please add Council Bach, please add Council Edwards, please add Council Fernandez Anderson, please add Council Flaherty, please add Council Lara, please add Council Lou Jean, please add Council Mejia, please add Council Worrell, and please add my name. Seeing no further, docket 0467 will be assigned to the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Council Royal. Mr. Clerk, please read docket 0468.
Docket number 0468, Councilor Mejia offer the following: in order for a hearing on establishing a mental health curriculum in Boston Public Schools.
The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to add my colleague, Councilor Erin Murphy, as a co-sponsor in this hearing order.
Council Murphy is so added.
Thank you. Since even before the COVID-19 pandemic, we've been dealing with a pandemic in our Boston Public Schools around mental health and wellness. It's gotten so bad that the American Academy of Pediatrics and Adolescent Psychiatry and Children's Hospital Association have declared a national emergency in children's mental health, citing a serious toll of the COVID-19 pandemic on top of existing challenges. Every day, students are being asked to leave their backpacks full of trauma at the door so that they can focus on their studies. And recently, we have seen how that untreated trauma has spilled over in our schools, out into these streets, from the shooting outside of Tech Boston Academy to the loaded gun found at Young Achievers of Science and Math and School, to several tombstones of our lost loved ones being defaced and even stolen. It is clear that we need to be doing a lot more to address mental health and wellness in our schools. In school, we teach students how to read, how to write, how to run, and even how to eat, but we do not do, what we do not do is give them the tools and resources to unpack their trauma in a nonviolent and productive way. This is why we're filing this hearing order. In terms of the data, the numbers are pretty clear. According to the Federal Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, emergency departments' visits for suspected suicide attempts among adolescents jumped 31% in 2020 compared to 2019. In February and March of this year, emergency department visits for suspected suicide attempts were 51% higher among girls ages 12 to 17 during the same period in 2019. I get choked up because I have a 12-year-old. I get choked up because I have a 12-year-old daughter. So this is hard. And I'm also having my own experience with this issue. So I'm growing up. You already know my story. So this clearly indicates that we need to be moving beyond the conventional plans of providing school psychologists and social workers when needed. They do great work, but we need to be doing more. In California, a bill which recently passed requires each school district county office of education, state special school and charter school that offers one or more courses in health education to pupils in middle school or high school to include those courses, some form of instructional mental health. And way back in 1999, Massachusetts Commissioner of Education, David Driscoll, released a comprehensive health curriculum framework which seeks to introduce mental health into the classroom. But it's clear that we're not doing enough or being intentional around mental health education in our schools. So I'm hoping to use this hearing as an opportunity to look at what we, what more we can be doing to uplift mental health and wellness in our schools. And before I finish, I also just want to give a shout out to Council Murphy, who has made youth mental health a cornerstone of her office's work. And I'm hoping that as the Chair and Vice Chair of the Committee of Education, we will be able to work collaboratively on this issue together. Our success as legislators is measured by the quality of the world we leave behind for the next generation. And we need to ensure that we have all the resources they need to be set up for success. And that very much includes mental health and wellness. Thank you. And I just wanted to say really quickly, because you know me, I always got a riff off the top and speak from my heart because that's just the way I know how. You know, we have, as parents, oftentimes passed on our own trauma to our children because we weren't taught how to deal with it. You know, I talk about the fact that when I was a teen, I also attempted suicide. But my mom was so afraid that I would be taken away from her that she never did anything about it. And I grew up believing that she didn't love me. And I think that if we're tackling mental health, we have an opportunity to de-stigmatize it in a way that will help our, the little ones understand that it's okay not to be okay. And that they need to be able to seek the support services that they need. And I think that this conversation, it's not just about a moment of, of political theater. It really is looking at the violence that's spilling over into our streets. There is a deep connection here. And we need to center mental health and wellness as part of that conversation. Otherwise, we're not getting to the root. So my hope is, is that as we continue to lean into this conversation, we recognize the responsibility and the opportunity that we have to change doing business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. The chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So we know our children are suffering with mental health issues. And we cannot expect them to properly address their stress and mental health struggles if we don't teach them the tools they need to work through this. Teaching mental health will lead to better outcomes for our children. I know Council Mejia has mentioned some of them, but we know the statistics are scary. Suicide is the third leading cause of death for children ages 10 to 24. And many or most of mental health conditions start during adolescence. Knowledge is power. So I thank Council Mejia for being the lead sponsor on this important issue. And I look forward to working with her and my other colleagues to make sure that this happens for our students in the Boston Public Schools and across the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Murphy. The chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. Council Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Council Mejia, for your courage to open up to such a vulnerable state with us and to be so beautiful and so pure, to be able to share yourself with us in a way that really exemplifies what a leader should conduct herself as. And I really appreciate, you know, the way you took us through that. And I'm, I'm just, I'm just humbled to hear you, to be able to have so much courage to be that vulnerable with us because a lot of us speak about mental health. And it's become a political jargon that I think everyone, now it's a catchphrase that we know, that we all must support, that we all, it's an issue, it's an issue, it's an issue. So we all talk about it. But the way that I've seen yourself and Council Murphy guide us through this, or at least the way I've watched you do it, I really, I just really appreciate you for that. In terms of what you filed today, I really look forward to the work. I would love to, please add my name, Mr. President. I would love to work with you on it. I think that one of the issues is not just, you know, the problem is not adding one social worker per school or, as you say, bringing the homeschool connection or creating that platform. The CBHI, CBHI, so Children Behavioral Health Initiative through Mass Health, covers only medical necessities. So this means that the service, the clinician will then go in and have to diagnose in order for the service to be rendered. The issue with that is FIFA service then perpetuates the cyclical effect of prison pipeline because you have to diagnose or sometimes misdiagnose or harshly diagnose a child. So I question and I really want us to talk about, how are we diagnosing our black and brown children? And how many fees do you have to take in order to render that service? Sometimes the issues are, as you are putting it in your here, in your request for the hearing, in the order is that you, sometimes the issue is circumstantial. It's situational. So it deserves a temporary NOS just to get that three-month service to figure out why that kid is in a shelter or why that kid's acting up or why, what's the problem circumstantially, temporarily for that moment? But what happens is, once they get the diagnosis, it follows them throughout their lives. And then they end up going, you know, not getting a job or not, or whatever. You know how the cookie crumbles. But I can't say enough how passionate I am about it. I am a strong advocate and I look forward to the work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fernandez Anderson. And Mr. Clerk, please add Council Fernandez Anderson, her name. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royal, Council Bach, Council Braden, Council Edwards, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louie Jen, Council Worrell. And please add the chair. Docket 0468 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0469.
Docket number 0469, Councilors Worrell and Mejia offered the following. Order for a hearing regarding barriers to business.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Council Worrell. Council Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. And thank you to my co-sponsor, Council Mejia, for her work around small businesses here in the city. The Institute for Justice recently released a report called Barriers to Business, a study how regulatory burdens impact entrepreneurs across 20 cities, including Boston. The report documents that fees range from $945 to start a barbershop to $5,554 to start a restaurant. The report scores Boston one out of five in a one-stop-shop analysis, reporting that the city's website does not effectively centralize information for entrepreneurs in an intuitive and organized way. The report also reveals the extremely complex process for starting a business, stating restaurants must complete 92 steps and barbershops 81 steps. There are also additional barriers in Boston. And this is something that Council Anderson always brings up, is the clean hands requirement. That means applicants for permits or licenses can be denied even if they owe a small amount of fines or fees to the city. These burdensome requirements especially impact low-income MWBE entrepreneurs. And we need to do everything possible to streamline processes and explore costs associated with starting a business. We must do better to ensure that we support small business growth to allow our main streets to flourish and contribute to our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Worrell. The chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to Council Worrell for adding us as one of the original co-sponsors. As the former Chair of the Committee of Small Business, I'm really excited that you are now taking the lead on this and so incredibly grateful for your leadership in the space. You know, during my time as the committee chair, we were doing so during the hardest point here in the city of Boston with the pandemic. And I saw firsthand how the barriers to businesses negatively impact communities of color, both for people who are established business owners and for those who are looking to start their own business. We worked to try to eliminate these barriers to business ownership, including passing the Language Access Ordinance and as well as establishing the Retail Residential Kitchens Ordinance here in the city of Boston. But we know that there is a lot, there's not one policy that can be implemented that's going to lift the decades of policy decisions that have been contributing to the equities that we are seeing today. As retail spaces become more expensive, as you know, you can't even afford a bathroom these days to set up shop because everything is so expensive in the city, no matter who you are. I think that the process of obtaining licenses remain as confusing as ever. And we need to, we need to act to ensure that our city is a model for entrepreneurs and small businesses. And I look forward to this hearing and to working alongside Council Worrell and the whole council on reducing these barriers to businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to sponsor it? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royal, Council Bach, Council Braden, Council Edwards, Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louie Jen, Council Murphy. And please add the chair. Docket 0469 will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Professional License. We're off to, we're on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0470.
Docket number 0470, Council Flynn for Council Mejia.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules, passage of Docket 0470. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0471.
Docket number 0471, Council Flynn for Council Murphy.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of Docket 0471. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0472.
Docket number 0472, Council Flynn for Council Edwards.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules, passage of Docket 0472. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, please read Docket 0473.
Docket number 0473, Council Flynn for Council Edwards.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules, passage of Docket 0473. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're on to late files. I am informed by the clerk that there are, there are four late-file matters. The late-file matters include a resolution from Council Braden, two personnel orders, a letter of absence from Council Baker. Mr. Clerk, let's, will you please read the letter of absence from Council Baker?
April 6, 2022. Dear President Flynn, please be advised that I will not be in attendance at the Boston City Council meeting on Wednesday, April 6, 2022. Please ask the city clerk to read this into, read this matter into the public record. Thank you. Sincerely, Boston City Council Frank Baker, District 3.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I should have, I should have said that the late files should be on everyone's desk. We will take a vote to add these five, these items onto the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late-file matters into the agenda, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The late-file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, you already read the one from Council Baker. The two personnel orders, Mr. Clerk, please. Yeah. The letter of absence from Council Baker will be placed on file. The two personnel orders, please.
Two personnel orders. First one, Council Flynn for Council Baker.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules. Chair seeks suspension of rules in passage of the first late-file personnel order. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. The second personnel order?
Second personnel order, Council Flynn for Council Baker.
The chair seeks suspension of the rules in passage of the second personnel late file. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. We're on to the, the final late file, which is a resolution from Council Braden.
Resolution offered by City Council Braden. Resolution in support of the Massachusetts State House Employee Union. Whereas since the summer of 2020, formation of Beacon, L, B, L, O, C, Building Leaders of Color, led by a collective of black staffers of the Massachusetts State House Legislative Staff, have organized for necessary reforms to advance workplace equity. And be it resolved at the Boston City Council meeting assembled, go on record supporting the unionization efforts of legislative staff and urges voluntary recognition of the Massachusetts State House Employee Union as the second state legislative union nationwide.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Council Braden. Council Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for entertaining this late file. Over the past several years, there's been an effort spearheaded by black legislative staff at the Massachusetts State House who've been organizing for reforms to advance workplace equity. They've spoken up on issues of discrimination and sexual harassment, pay disparities and immense, and the immense workload that has ever increased throughout the pandemic. We all know from attending community meetings that legislative staff from the State House attended, you know, along with our staff, they attend meetings in the community all over the city and late into the evening in many, in many instances. Last Thursday, representatives from the IBEW notified State House leaders that they had obtained a successful majority of union authorization cards signed by a majority of Senate staff and House staff are poised to follow suit shortly. And once recognized, the Massachusetts State House Employee Union would become only the second such union of state legislative staff in the country after Oregon, which organized last May. Every worker deserves a union. And a union of state legislative staff would help create a workplace and, and a Massachusetts people's house where employees are valued and properly compensated for their work. Staff are calling for consistent pay grades across offices, measures to recruit, support and retain a diverse workforce of talented staff, clearly defined job roles and responsibilities, and most importantly, the right to collective bargaining to provide staff a voice in matters concerning their workplace. As elected, as elected officials, we are only as successful in serving the needs of our constituents because of our hardworking staff. And they deserve to have a voice in workplace conditions. So on a related note, I also want to acknowledge the, the work of the Starbucks workers and the Workers United who are organizing for, they have already successfully organized 14 Starbucks locations in Massachusetts, seven right here in the city of Boston. And two stores will kick off a union election this Friday at Packard's Corner in my district and in Coolidge Corner in Brookline. And four stores will start voting on Monday. Lower Alston, Cleveland Circle, in Brighton, Longwood, and in, and in Watertown. I offer this resolution today urging our State House colleagues to recognize the State House Employee Union, urge my colleagues to join me in valuing the work of all legislative staff and send our well wishes to the Starbucks workers as they unionize their, in their unionizing campaign. I respectfully ask to suspend and pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Braden. Does anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Please raise your hand. Mr. Clerk, please add Council Royal. Please add Council Fernandez Anderson, Council Flaherty, Council Lara, Council Louie Jen, Council Mejia, Council Murphy, Council Worrell. Please add the chair. Council Braden seeks suspension of the rules in adoption of the first late, of this late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The resolution has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, we're going on to green sheets. Mr. Clerk, we're going on to green sheets. Anyone wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. We are moving on to the consent agenda. I have been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. Announcements. Do any of our colleagues have any announcements at this time? The Chair recognizes, the Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to bring to everyone's attention the issue that's impacting ABCD right now with the potential to lose their Title X funds, which they've been receiving for almost 50 years, and I think 47 to be exact. So this is one of those things that I think that Bob Cord would be rolling around in his grave and being upset with. So we all have representatives, some of us attend ourselves, others have representatives. I strongly urge them to be there at tonight's meeting to learn a little bit about this issue. For those viewing at home, obviously, ABCD is a community action agency established in 1962 to empower disadvantaged people by providing them with tools to overcome poverty. They impact over 100,000 households in the Boston area. They receive resources, and they support efforts including food, housing, fuel assistance, job training skills, ESOL, youth services, Head Start, and more. And with this specific funding, we learned that their application was accepted and approved, but they're saying that there's no funding to support that. So we need to do all we need to do and put that effort and support ABCD and be present at the meeting tonight. And as it directly impacts Boston, there'll be 23 service sites that will be impacted that provide family services. There'll be 18 staff positions potentially cut with our community health centers and hospitals, and there'll also be seven staff positions that potentially get cut at ABCD. So they're reaching out for our assistance, and I think we need to do what we need to do, stand by them and let folks know. I know that I had a brief conversation with Congressman Lynch earlier, and I know he is doing the best he can down there to make sure that we can turn that funding mechanism back on for ABCD. So just want to make everyone aware of it, if they're not aware of it, and ask that they or their staffs attend tonight's ABCD meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Flaherty, could you send the Chair the details of the meeting, and I'll make sure our colleagues do receive it?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Counsel Lara.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. The Chair recognizes Counsel Lara. Counsel Lara, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn. I, as most of us know, April is Autism Acceptance Month. All of my colleagues know that I have a five-year-old autistic son, and so I just wanted to, one name, and I wanted to offer my support. If your office is planning on doing any communications or hosting any events for Autism Acceptance Month, please reach out. There is a lot of language that is oftentimes offensive to autistic people, and there's a lot of shifting of the narrative that we're trying to do. So if you want any support, my communications manager is going to be putting together kind of like a sheet to make suggestions around how to speak about autism and how to speak around autistic people. And so I just wanted to offer myself as a resource if any of my colleagues are planning on doing something.
Thank you, Counsel Lara. Anyone else like to speak? The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Flynn, and I rise with some sad news that we lost here in the city of Boston, Terry Dolan, a longtime advocate for the city of Boston. She worked under six governors, Secretary and Treasurer of Lower Mills for decades, Ward 17 Committee Member, Warden of the Lower Mills, Voting Precinct, Board Member of the Dorchester Historical Society, Board Member of the Friends of Shattuck Hospital, Chairperson of the Walter Baker Relighting, and she used to knit hats and scarves for the homeless. So just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, and my prayers go out to her and her family. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. Anyone else like to speak on announcements? I would also like to echo what Counsel Lara mentioned about Autism Awareness Month. Thank you for the incredible work that you are doing, Counsel Lara, on this important issue. My sister has a boy that's a special needs, special needs boy that doesn't, is non-verbal, and he spends several days a week with my parents. So it's also important for us to recognize that our special needs children are an important part of our society, and as a government, it's important to also support them, but also to support the parents and the grandparents, because a lot of the grandparents are supporting the special needs children as well. So just want to say thank you to Counsel Lara for bringing that forward. We're going on to memorials. We will adjourn today in memory of the following individuals. From Counselor Baker, Flynn, Flaherty, and Murphy, Catherine White, who is the mother of Father Joe White, as many of us know, Counselor Baker, Ujeng, and Worrell, Terry Dolan, for Counselor Bach, Edward Ned Johnson. A moment of silence, please. The Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of those individuals mentioned here. We are scheduled to meet again in the Aionala Chamber on Wednesday, April 13, at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The councilor is adjourned. Thank you to the City Council Central staff and to the clerk's office as well. Thank you.